The April 7, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We will start with an invocation and pledge. I've asked Commissioner Thompson to please lead us.
All right. Father God, as we come this afternoon, we ask for your guidance. We ask for your insight. Just lead us through each and every item today. Provide us with the information necessary to make a decision that will benefit Brunswick County. Father, we give thanks for all those that defended our right to be here and still defend it today. Making sure that we're able to have public meetings such as this. We also say a special prayer for our public safety personnel, our police, our fire, EMS, our telecommunicators, all of which provide a great service to this county, and we are so appreciative for that. Father, we do also want to remember a couple of individuals this evening, Father, that one recently passed, Christian Hoffman, and just want to say what an inspiration that young man was to all of this community. And then, Father, we've got one of our own retired EMS, Jeff Oxnard, that was moved to hospice yesterday. And, Father, we just ask that you be with both of these families, Father, as they experience the difficulty with this challenging life, Father. And we certainly appreciate all that you do for us in your holy name, Father. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its top.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Before we move on, I want to apologize for the nasalness and stuffiness. I've been pollined, as I'm sure many of you have, so just bear with me. All right. Any adjustments to the agenda, or I'll take a motion for approval?
I'll move approval if no one has any changes. Second?
Williams and Cook? Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. All right. Now we move on to the public comment period. We have quite a few here. So let me briefly tell you the rules here. Each speaker may speak for three minutes. If there is a group spokesman who must come up first, that person may speak for eight minutes. Begin by stating your name and address for the minutes. Comments shall be civil. No personal attacks, no obscenity, no derogatory or slanderous remarks or comments regarding any candidacy for public office. Speakers should not expect the commissioners to engage in dialogue or answer questions. This is our time to hear from you, not to go, not to have a back and forth. So with that, we will move into the public comment period. Diana Fotanatos, hope I said that correctly. Those Greek names are a little bit tough.
You did a great job. Thank you. Well, happy National Library Week. I'm Diana Fotanatos residing at 3901 Marshfield Drive in St. James. You have all made an excellent decision by hiring Patricia Do as the Brunswick County Library Director. She knows how to build a library that serves the needs of the community, and here's the proof. Since she became director in 2022 and with the increased funding since then, the Brunswick County Library now ranks eighth out of 85 libraries in the state in visits per patron. We were selected as one of only six North Carolina locations to host a touring exhibit from the Smithsonian on Voices and Votes, and that was viewed by over 12,000 people at the South Brunswick Branch Library. We've hired a youth services librarian to coordinate services and programs for ages zero to 18. Her work has increased juvenile programs by 23% and attendance by 26%. Teen programs have increased by 427% and attendance by 1,510%. We've migrated to NC Cardinal, a statewide library consortium that provides over 7.9 million titles from across the state at no cost to Brunswick County Library patrons. We've ordered a bookmobile, started production, planned for staffing, workspace, service model, and more in advance of delivery. Increased new library card registrations by 34% as taxpaying voters who value library services move into the area. This kind of success comes from a commitment to investing in our libraries. It's a great start, but we've got a long way to go, and federal funding is very much in flux right now. Because of the county's support, the library has been able to increase staff from 19 to 26 FTEs, but based on our population and state library standards, we should have 43. We now rank 79th in staffing up from 85th. The big issue? Median operating expenditures per libraries per capita in North Carolina are $25.09. Brunswick County spends $12.39. That's better than the $9.17 it was three years ago, but we still rank only 83rd out of 85 libraries in how much we spend per capita. And please, keep in mind, the library budget is only one-half of 1% of the total county budget. Bottom line, your support is critical right now, especially since the federal funding from the Institute of Museum and Library Services has been suspended as Doge continues to streamline the federal government. Those federal funds currently pay for NC Cardinal, statewide access to eBooks and audiobooks for grade zero to eight via NC Kids Digital Library and NC Kids Level Up, also pays for professional development for the library staff via the state library at no cost to Brunswick County. We know you have tough budget decisions to make, but Patricia has done an amazing job measurably improving library services for the county. I therefore respectfully request your full support of her budget request. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Donnelly?
Denise Donnelly. I live on 406 Ocean Breeze Drive in Supply, and I'm not going to repeat all the statistics Diane gave us. I'm here in support of our library. I'm a 20-year volunteer at Rourke, and I've seen so much improvement in the physical space, the programming. I just want to commend everyone who works there, you who support the libraries and say, it is community outreach. We need this. They are doing so much more than just checking out books. They're helping people on the computer. They're educating. They're doing children's programs even through the summer. So I am impressed with what they're doing, but they need money to keep on doing that and more staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Becky Schreiber?
Good afternoon, Commissioners and citizens. My name's Becky Schreiber, and I'm a resident of Brunswick County. I live at 2205 Umstead Lane in Leland, and I'm here today to request that our commissioners address our ongoing clean water crisis for our residents whose wells now provide unsafe water. My husband and I moved to Leland, to Brunswick Forest, into a new home in 2013, and in this development, we were hooked up to town water. Prior to our move to North Carolina, we lived in a small town in Maine for approximately 30 years. And for a long time, well, we lived on the end of a dead-end street and had our own well on our property. But when a large development came in next to us of 56 large homes, we were hooked up to the town water immediately, so that our, we didn't have any problems with that. I have a few credentials. Well, one of them is that I'm a registered dietitian, a nutritionist, and I've held a lot of leadership positions in my profession. And I now work for the Institute of Child Nutrition out of the University of Mississippi. I've spent my entire career focused on providing the best nutrition for families. Water is a necessary nutrient. Many folks in my field regard water as the most important nutrient that we need, and that's why many organizations regard water as a human right. So honestly, I'm a little nervous. This is the first time I've ever had to advocate for safe water. I think I just took things for granted, and I'm a little shocked. I'm personally shocked that I think this is one of the wealthiest counties in North Carolina. I don't know. And I'm really, I'm just shocked. And honestly, if I had known that moving here into a development, when we chose our place to technically retire, even though I'm not retired, if I had chosen to live in a place that was going to affect folks' wells that live here for their life, it's a deal breaker for me. I would have crossed this place right off my list in terms of a choice. So I realize there's a lot of history here. There's been a lot of advocating for grants to look into it. There's been some petitions signed over the years by many citizens. I think it's been discussed for many years, and at this point, my coming here today is saying, instead of pushing the paper across the table, let's get it solved. It's time to solve this. This is a real crisis. For me, it's not rocket science. The water wells were safe prior to the development of the, I have one paragraph. That's it. The water wells were safe before the development moved in. I think our tax dollars should support safe water for these folks. I think the developers, it should be a pre-existing agreement. If they're going to move in and affect the wells, they need to take care of it. So finally, I have an extra copy if anyone needs one. You are taking up a proclamation today of a Safe Water Drinking Week, I believe.
Give that to the clerk.
In May, and my challenge to you is to read this out loud because honestly, I don't think it's going to pass the straight face test, in my mind. Okay, so in the past, the past is the past. Let's demonstrate our integrity and our decency, and please, Commissioner, let's do what's right. And if it were your child drinking from those water wells, I'm sure that you would find a solution sooner. So I appreciate your time and your work for our community. I really do. Thank you so much.
Alexis, I'm not even going to try to say this last name. Is Audrey coming up with you?
Good afternoon. My name is Alexis Yoboah Cody. I am an attorney with Earth Rights International, an international human rights organization operating in the United States, South America, and Southeast Asia. And I am here today to amplify the request that the Brunswick County prioritize clean, safe drinking water for all its residents. Brunswick County residents, the Brunswick County NAACP, and other community groups have been making this request for clean, safe drinking water for decades, and we have hit a crisis point. I stand in solidarity with them. In 2019, I first worked with Brunswick County residents on their issue of trying to get clean, safe drinking water. I spoke to residents in Piney Grove, Royal Oak, Longwood Ash, Dog Head Bay, Cedar Grove, Winnabeau, Cedar Hill, Leland, and Navassa. I sat with them in their homes, and I saw their water, and the proof was in their well water. Their need for clean water was urgent then. In 2023, earth rights and over 400 Brunswick County residents signed a petition to ask the county to get clean, safe drinking water to residents who do not have access to county water. Whether or not they were directly affected, they understood that the lack of access to clean, safe drinking water is a human rights issue. We all know how important clean, safe water is, and this commission has voted unanimously to celebrate the achievement of drinking water with Drinking Water Access Week every year since at least 2022. I look to vote on Drinking Water Week again today. But for many people relying on well water, they cannot celebrate. Again, the proof is in their water quality, the color, the taste, and the smell, and what it's doing to their health. We hope that the county will take the human rights crisis seriously and take the necessary first steps towards getting clean, safe drinking water to all of its residents. We are committed to seeing that through with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Silas Goldsboro?
Good afternoon. My name is Silas Goldenberg. I moved to Brunswick, well, I come to Brunswick County in 1987, and I purchased my home in 1993. And since then, the water that's down here is, you know, you can't drink it, and you can't wash your clothes in it. And since then, I done had to redo a well, and I had to probably burn up two water pumps, plus the fact I had to replace one of the fluids in my home. And, you know, by being on a fixed income and everything like that, it's kind of rough on a person, you know, when you're disabled. I got hurt in 1987 in Charlotte at the Douglas Airport, and I had to replace the fluid, replaced, had to replace the fluid, replaced wells. And also, I had to buy two new water softeners, and which, you know, they done burned up. And so, and, you know, I wish that, I know that it's something that can be done, and I'm hoping that y'all would take it under consideration that, you know, I don't know if there's grants out here that far to help people, but right where I stay, I'm less than 1,000 feet from where they bought the water. We don't even have a fire hydrant on Marlberry. I see on Marlberry, it's 544. And we don't even have a fire hydrant, and they brought the water down through this one fire hydrant that's going down next to the motel, and that's where they tied the water off less than 1,000 feet from my home. That's why they didn't bring it down through the black neighborhood. I don't know. Like I said, it's not a fire hydrant out there. And, you know, I've just been having a whole lot of problems with it. And if, you know, you understand what I'm talking about, if your family, if I could stay in one of y'all homes and drank y'all water, and then y'all come and drank my water, then you'll see what I'm talking about. Other than that, you know, this is what I have to say about the situation. And for me, it had been kind of hit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paul Parker?
My name is Paul Parker, President of the Brunswick County National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. And I'm so proud of that because all people have color. This is Barbara Casey that's with me. She was not able to, she's, this is her first time being here. She didn't sign, sign in, but I'm gonna let Barbara tell the story for me of the water situation.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Barbara Casey. I reside in the Brunswick County Supply Area. I've lived here, born and raised all my life. I moved away for 25, and I came back 1989, and I built a home. I did not know in coming back that the water would be as bad as it was. Rust, smell, odor. But it's awful. I've had to purchase a water softener. I've been paying for a water softener, renting one, since I built my home. I buy water to drink. I buy water for everything but washing clothes in the machine and washing dishes. I'm retired now. I can't afford all of that. It's getting to be very costly. I grew up in this community, and we've been fighting for clean water. We all have the same story. The water is bad. And we are hoping and praying one day that things will change. My fire tax fee on my taxes, the fire fee is $400. And I don't even, I don't even have a hydrant outside of my, on my road, no place. I think that's a little steep. And we are, we're trying to get some help. There's been a lot of health issues. There's been a lot of people dying. All of a sudden, you come up with all of these illnesses out of the blue. Well, how did that, how long has that been going on? What caused that? We don't know. And the lady, the lady from Maine that's working out of Mississippi, I applaud her speech this morning and hoping that you all could do something to help us, because we do know there are grants out there that could help us. We shouldn't have to fight like this for water. Their dogs on 211 didn't fight or ask for that water, but they got it, county water. And I don't think we need to have to fight for water like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a good month. Month of April is the risen price, so let us redeem ourselves to get some clean water.
Gary Knoll?
Did he spell the last name?
No.
I'm Gary Knoll Senior. I've been in Brunswick County residence since 1971. I retired from Pfizer and ADM after 36 years. I'm a commercial fisherman. Been one since 1976. I live at Sunset Harbor. Been there over 20-something years. The boat ramp at Sunset Harbor is terrible, unbelievable. Sunday a week ago, it was a new moon. I was going out shrimping. I stayed there an hour and 27 minutes because I couldn't move, couldn't even get to the pier, which is not 50 yards away. And to show you how bad it is, a guy on a kayak, pulling a kayak, walked by me and said, Catfish, how you doing? I said, Ain't no dog on water. So I waited an hour and a half. I got it. It's a marked navigational channel, and I believe by state law, any marked navigational channel, the state, the Coast Guard, and maybe the county is responsible for the safety of the people in that area. If a tourist comes by says Easter's coming up and everything, comes down the waterway and turns in there, they dead meat. They ain't gonna make it if it's low tide. So I've called the wildlife engineer. I've called David Rousher and everybody I know, so I'm coming to y'all. so I'm coming to y'all. If you got a young'un out there at Blue Water Point, between Blue Water Point and the harbor, and something happens, emergency, Sunset Harbor Fire Department's sitting here, there's no way, and you know what, to get there, because it ain't happening, there ain't no water. So the wildlife did have a surveyor out there two weeks ago for two days, surveying it. So maybe it'll get done, and I just wanted to bring that up to you and make it aware of y'all how terrible it is. Unless it's a rising tide or high tide, there's no way, and you know what, to get a boat out there to help somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll.
Good afternoon. My name is Albert Harrison. I reside at 7748 James Way Northeast in Leland. I became a resident of Brunswick County in 1945, February 28, 1945. Now, I haven't lived here for the whole 80 years, but I've lived here a good portion of the 80 years, and I live there now, 7748 James Way. And my water is so bad, I've, I've had to replace the water heaters, had to replace the water softeners, and still have to buy water for us to drink. Now, I don't know if there's anybody in here that's 80 years old, but a lot of times when we get this age, we're not as strong as we used to be. Now, I'm a, I'm a 100% disabled Vietnam veteran. I served in the U.S. Marines, and I was strong then. I'm not as strong now. Caribou's big old 40 bottle cases of water, or the big old six- gallon cases of water that I buy, it's mighty tough when we carry it. And there is a water line passing down Wolf Ridge Road, probably within a city block of where I live. We are here today. I'm here today to ask that you consider helping us to get some clean water so that I will not have to strain the rest of my life. I probably don't have another 80 years, like that, right? But we asking you to help before the, whatever few years I have left, that you will help us to get some clean water. Because I can't afford water softeners, I can't afford to keep replacing water heaters, and I can't afford to continue to live. And my wife is dying, she's already got a bad kidney. She's been, spent the last week in Chapel Hill in the hospital up there, because one of her kidneys is so bad, we think that that's part of the poison, her system is being poisoned from the kidney from, because of the water. We're asking and seeking your help with the Clean Water Act.
Okay, that concludes our public comments period. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they need to hold, or I will accept the motion?
Motion to approve.
Thompson, second.
I'll second.
Williams, any discussion? Not? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we move on to presentations, and there's a lot. We're gonna be here a bit. All right. First, we have a proclamation for the lineman appreciation day. I gave you, all right, Pat's doing that one.
So with Brunswick Electric lineman and Tim Tippett and Pam Hardy, y'all come on down? And come to the front, so that the cameras can see.
Damn, it's half the room. Hey, Ms. Hardy? Nah, you're gonna have to get on both sides.
It's a lot of people.
It's half the room.
Half.
Wow.
Well, I really appreciate what I guess the voices like to do.
Pat, you and Ms. Hardy might want to get up front, so.
Are you saying they're sure?
No.
It's an honor for me to proclaim that the appreciation for April Day, the chairman of the lineman appreciation. I tell you, every time we have a storm, these are the best men that I think are important because without y'all, we won't have electricity, we won't have heat, we won't have air conditioning, we won't have anything going. So every time we have a hurricane, we all come in and we don't have power, the chill box go all down, it's down, it's okay. I appreciate y'all doing the best part, and I appreciate it. So I'm definitely just proclamation, but I also want to say the House of Representatives, the House of Representatives, the Congress, or has co-sign or decent sponsor of the bill to protect our linemen while they're working. And there's a protection act out in our house building, so I'm glad he's done that to protect our line men. Where, this is lineman appreciation day, proclamation. So it says, whereas the profession of electric lineman requires passive medications and skill in production, and whereas linemen work 365 days a year in uncommon, inclement weather, and hazardous weather conditions to build, maintain, and repair the electric infrastructure, and whereas linemen are often the first responders during storms and other catastrophe, and speak them on events working to make the scene safer for other first responders, and whereas Brunswick County joins other communities across the nation in recognizing and celebrating the profession of electric lineman, and therefore we honor our Brunswick Electric and D.C. Progress personnel for support at select, how do you say it? It's simply, sorry about that today, service to the county. Now therefore, be it beside the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners, to proclaim April 18th, 25, as lineman appreciation day of Brunswick County, and call upon all citizens and businesses to acknowledge and thank these linemen, you see, for the selfless and dangerous work they perform every day to keep our power on and the public safe. Proclaim this the 7th day of April 2025. And I congratulate you, and I thank y'all for coming, and here's you one, and here's you one, and I appreciate you. I appreciate everyone that's here, and I know that the other commissioners do too, and will stand up and make a picture with all others behind you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that was a motion. I'll second the motion.
That is a motion.
I'm just waiting. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that for everybody sitting out here, everybody sitting at home, these are the people that make it happen, because right after we have a storm, right after we have a tornado, God forbid, or anything like that, they're out there immediately, and they get the power back on. And if, you'll notice, a lot of times, if you got a generator, you hardly have to crank it a lot of times, thank the Lord, because the thing is, y'all get it going, and y'all work so well together. So thank you for all that you guys do, because y'all are great heroes. We do appreciate your service.
Absolutely.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I need a woman to direct me.
I don't think you can see me anyway, but they're tall down there.
Put all the tall guys in the middle.
This is bad. I'm behind them up here, and I'm still shorter than them.
Guaranteed to make us all look younger and better.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. All right. Next proclamation is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Commissioner Williams?
Please, we have someone from Coastal Horizons here. This is a proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas, April is recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, time to bring attention to the issue of sexual violence, and encourage to prevent it in our communities. And whereas, this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Month theme, Together We Act, United We Change, highlights our collective power to create safer environments for all. By standing in solidarity, we can build a future free from sexual violence, and create a world where everyone is safe, valued, and respected. And whereas, sexual assault affects individuals and families across all walks of life and in fact, their well-being, safety, and potential security. And whereas, education, awareness, and community involvement play a critical role in preventing sexual assault, sexual violence by promoting respect and the importance of speaking out against harmful behaviors. And whereas, supporting survivors, holding offenders accountable, and ensuring access to resources for those affected by sexual violence, strength is a fabric of our communities and upholds the values of justice and dignity for all. And whereas, RCC of Coastal Horizons provides essential services, including 24-hour crisis response, individual counseling, and advocacy for victims in new handover, winter, and new encounters, ensuring that those impacted by sexual violence can seek help and support they are. Now therefore, be it resolved that we do hereby proclaim action April 2025, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to take an active role in preventing sexual violence, supporting survivors, promoting a safer community for everyone. On this 7th day of April 2025, and Mr. Chairman, I move it through.
I have a second.
Second.
Cook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next proclamation. Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. Again, they put all the tall guys right in front of you.
Can't even see me, babe.
It is an active, secret, dangerous, but anyway, I'm here in honor of this afternoon, by y'all's resolution, that recognizes Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, which is April the 13th through the 9th. And I'll go ahead and bring this, and then give a picture, maybe a few comments. Whereas, Sexual Awareness Month, if it does, it made it its national animal care and control appreciation week, with the goal of recognizing, thanking, and commending all animal control staff, the service they provide, citizen, citizen, public safety, and all types of animals, animals of foster nation. And whereas, every day, animal pro-laws search and shelter attendants, put themselves in potential dangers, in often uncontrollable situations, to protect the health and welfare of animals and public. And whereas, the Brunswick County Sheriff's Office, Animal Protective Services personnel provides main shelter, daily care, standard services, critical, medical care to all animals, engines, as well as essential community services such as adoption, loss of fangs, vaccination clinics, outreach, and community education. And whereas, the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners recognizes and commends the Brunswick County Sheriff's Animal Protective Services personnel for the many dedicated long hours of service to the community, and for fulfilling the county's commitment to provide our highest and most efficient level of customer care. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners proclaim this, uh, requires that the week of April 13th through the 9th of 2025, as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week in Brunswick County, and encourage the citizens to join us in expressing the sincere appreciation for all the services and dedication of our animal services personnel. And this was adopted the 7th day of April 2005, 2025, and signed by our Sheriff, Mark Portek.
Is that a motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I like Cheryl.
All right, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. I'm gonna bring it right up here to one, two.
Good, hide my chins. There you go.
So, I wouldn't mind saying one thing, you know, we've got our animal care services and our telecommunicators up next. Doesn't matter what division you are in the sheriff's office, you are just as much of our family as anybody else, whether it's a civilian, sworn, detention officer, telecommunicators, and we've got a lot of great dedicated members here at the sheriff's office as a whole. So I thank you guys for the job that you do, because it takes a lot of patience to do that and say, hey, it is sometimes a thankless job, and I appreciate everything that you all do, but these divisions, very important.
Appreciate it, y'all.
Sheriff, don't go far. Next one. Again, the Sheriff's Office proclamation, Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Commissioner Cook?
Come on down, guy. I feel like I'm cheating, because I know these guys, and they are the best. I tell you what, if you call them, what happens is, you know that they'll also be on the way there, the loop that makes it all work. And I'm listening to traffic, and I had them in the world going on the past 24 hours. So anyway, let me read this by the commission. Brunswick County Office of Commissioners, Resolutions for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 13th through 9th, 2025. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency services, 911 Communication Center is created to provide vital contributions to the quality of life enjoyed by citizens and business in Brunswick County. And whereas, the telecommunicators are trained, prepared, and ready, the safety of our animals and officers, firefighters, and EMS personnel are independent on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone in Brunswick County 911, communicates to the center. And whereas, telecommunicators are the first and most perfect contacters citizens have with emergency services. Whereas, telecommunicators, of Brunswick County Sheriff's Office, 911 Communication Center, must contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, express fires, treatment of patients. Whereas, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is served to recognize the telecommunicators in Brunswick County, provide vital public safety service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Brunswick County Work Commission proclaim and declare the week of April 13th, 9th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Brunswick County, in honor of the men and women whose passion, diligence, passion, diligence.
I'm not the only one.
And when I went ahead to, I was gonna say, it's just.
Dynamic.
Also, to keep our citizens, Thursday, April 3rd, 2025. Michael Portek, Chairman, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move it through.
Second.
Carolyn, you got those? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Appreciate you all, thank you.
I appreciate y'all, really do. Thank y'all, thank you ma'am, appreciate y'all. Mr. Chairman, if I could share one thought with you just for a moment. You know, whenever I first came to the county some 25 years ago, shortly after arriving, because I moved to Brunswick County for a job, but shortly after arriving, the 911 center came under, I was able to become the director overseeing that group of individuals. Let me say that there's been a lot of water under the bridge between now and then, but I will say that, you know, it takes a very unique person to do telecommunications work. To be, to have the technical skills is one thing, but to be able to sit on a phone and listen to someone going through probably the most traumatic moment in their lifetime and have someone on the other line understand the type of assistance that needs to be provided. I mean, I, everyday normal citizen cannot do that. And so, I think that we are, I think Brunswick County, I think we're very, very fortunate to have the individuals that we have that do that on a, on a daily basis, 24 hours a day. And so, I commend you, and matter of fact, I even recognize faces from when I was there. So I know that we've got some, we've got some very senior individuals that are doing a great job in making sure that the younger folks that are coming in are very well-trained and ready. And so, and I know that the department has transferred over to the Sheriff's Office, and I think the sheriff has done an amazing job of keeping that as a top-notch certified agency. And I think Brunswick County has a lot to be proud of because of that. So, I just wanted to say thank y'all and publicly thank you, so appreciate y'all.
And I would just like to echo that, I think my first exposure to the shit, to the telecommunicators, I believe, was when I did the Sheriff's Citizens Academy years ago. And I truly had no idea what you guys deal with until I was there and had the chance to tour it. And you do a job that I don't think I could do, so thank you. I admire your willingness to do what you do, and we greatly appreciate it.
Hey, and I did have one more, because I did allude to the utilization of animal control this, this last couple of weeks. My wife, she likes to do outdoor yard work, and so she was out picking up pine cones in a, in a lot beside the house and noticed that there was a very, very large gator that had come up to greet her. And so, you know, by contacting the Sheriff's Office, they responded, and then they followed back up where it becomes a state agency issue. And so they followed back up with that and continuously followed back up until the issue was resolved. And I just want to say thank you, because I happen not to be at the house at that particular moment. And that, that even added more complications to the situation. But I truly appreciate y'all handling that and in the manner in which you did. So thank y'all, and, and these are things that are outside the box sometimes, but it has, somebody's got to do it. And so I think that's what we look to Brunswick County to do, so thank y'all again.
If there are any pictures of the gator incident, I would like those, please.
Yeah. Not with me in it, for sure.
Randy, I gotta think if you were home, you'd have new cowboy boots.
I just want to say thank you guys for all you do, y'all always just above and beyond, thank you so much.
I need Brianna Guera from the Carousel Center and Robbie Hall from the Department of Social Services.
How big was the gator?
You can't do nothing about a gator unless it's a gator.
Yeah, that's right, but it's got more or less a brim of them there.
He's got to just, he looks like a lizard.
It's a mama looking to.
If it gets in your living room, I think you can shoot it.
Oh, yeah.
This, this little baby, he may be this big.
They have the ride away.
They do have the ride away, that's right.
They, they told me, said if it was, if it was one, if we could get a whole.
Oh, that's just.
Look at all the people.
We're gonna clean out all the stuff out, so.
All right. Brunswick County Board of Commissioners Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. Whereas, in the fiscal year 2023-24, Carousel Child Advocacy Center received 351 child abuse case referrals, with 138 of those referrals being the children in Brunswick County. And whereas, children are our most valuable and vulnerable resources shaping the future of our communities. And whereas, child abuse can be lack, sexual, physical, emotional, a serious issue with long-term effects on individuals and future generations. And whereas, positive childhood experience, such as access to safer adults, loving caregivers, and stable nurturing relationships can reduce the impact of adverse childhood experiences that support children's well-being. And whereas, addressing child abuse requires collective action to change social norms, open up biases, and focus on families' needs while inspiring education in action across all sectors. And whereas, Brunswick County is dedicated to preventing child abuse by investing in primary intervention, intervention services, and equitable systems that ensure all children and families thrive. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners that April 2025 will be recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month. All citizens, community organizations, and businesses are urged to promote awareness, education, and support for families to prevent child abuse and strengthen our community. Adopted this the 7th day of April 2025, signed by Chair Portman. That, I make the motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Darrell. Thank you. Appreciate each and every word, let me come down this way. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Think Amber wanted to be still. Yeah, short ones in front.
Yeah, two lines, and the shortness get in front. In between each one.
They need a box.
They're still taller than me, and I'm.
I hear, I hear his praise. We milk boxes are crates up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, pick on the short guy, I get it.
He didn't get his best side.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We want him done. There is one more, and I have to ask the real boss, what do I do with this? Darrell, this says there's no presentation, I don't see John Nichols here, so do I just read this?
Nope, you got a couple people from utilities that are here.
Okay, utilities guys.
Donald's not wearing a tie, so we're good.
Yeah, no money tie today.
We're not asking for money.
Sir.
That's just the two of us today.
Everybody else is working.
Yes.
The camera's over, yeah. The people online want to see you.
Providing for both the ports, safety, and water in Brunswick County. And whereas, Brunswick County Public Utilities serve not only in the local areas of town, but also within the municipalities of Boilish Lake, River, Powerfish, Carolina Shores, Paswell Beach, parts of Cleveland, the Boston, Block Trash, parts of World Avenue, St. James, St. Luke, Southport, Shaloe, Sunset Beach, and Barnet Pass. Do you believe anyone can? Whereas, for nearly four decades, Brunswick County Public Utilities has faithfully provided water to other utilities as in wholesale customers as well, including Ocean Out, Beach Hole Beach, Oak Island, and Wolfman Island. And whereas, the county recognizes that water is our most valuable natural resource and that access to safe drinking water is an asset. And whereas, Brunswick County Public Utilities operates a premier drinking water system that has been awarded the North Carolina American Water Works Association for large water distribution system, as I already said. Large water distribution system over the year awards six titles and the latest recognition just in 2024 that safeguards public health by producing the sugar in drinking water to citizens throughout Brunswick County. And whereas, the county's water system also requires high protection, supports the continued growth, essential for the economic and health of the region, and enhances the quality of life for all citizens of the county. And whereas, the county has taken extraordinary steps to provide sufficient water for and safeguard the health and economic future of its residents and customers by undertaking construction of an expansion of the Northwest Water Tree Plan and the addition of low-pressure reverse host losses to remove emerging contaminants in the water source. And whereas, the county calls on the residents and businesses of our county, the regulatory agencies tasked with the source water protection and all the residents and visitors who are in the state that impact the upstream river system to protect our water storage from pollution, practice water conservation, and to support efforts to provide high-quality drinking water for the residents and visitors of Brunswick County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Chairman and Brunswick County Board of Commissioners that first full week of May is the drinking water week. Therefore, be it further resolved that copying this document should be reported in the early minutes of this board. Adopted this the 7th day of April 2025, signed by Chairman Mike Portman. With that, I need to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you.
Like, I think she wants you for the picture.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess you can come up here, yeah.
Yeah. Either way, you gotta be.
I'll be behind you.
Stand directly behind.
You're fine, yeah, that's where we want to be. Or, yeah, on the ends of the commissioners, that would be fine. There we go.
Bookends.
Someone. Donald's tall. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, we're done with those. Way too many. All right. Bring that back down. It is time to move into a couple of public hearings. With that, I will turn it over to our attorney to tell us the statutes and what it being and all of that.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. MGO Holdings LLC desires to purchase approximately 22 acres at the Leland Innovation Park for $35,000 an acre pursuant to North Carolina Journal Statute 15871. The county can do such a sale after determining the probable average weekly wage to be paid to workers by the business, which is approximately $52 an hour. The fair market value of the property, which we believe, based upon the length of time it's been held since October of 1985, and the unique physical characteristics of the parcel, we do believe $35,000 is appropriate for fair market value of the property. And the property will also be bound by the restrictive covenants of the Leland Innovation Park. So the board needs to first have a public hearing, and then after that, should it so choose, it could approve the contract for sale of the property.
With that, we will open the public hearing. I have nobody signed up to speak. Is there somebody that would, Sterling?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Bill Early, Executive Director of Brunswick Business and Industry Development. I'm here in support of the request that is before you. We have been working with USMGO for about two years, encouraging them to locate operations here in Brunswick County. As the county attorney shared with you previously, the county has owned the land or held the land for roughly 40 years, and its purpose was to encourage economic development within Brunswick County. Also, it was noted that their average wages would be around $52 per hour. The current average wage for Brunswick County for 2025 is $23.78. So their proposed wages are more than double of what the existing private sector wage is. As the attorney shared with you, there have been some challenges with this property. Brunswick Bid has conducted two environmental assessments of the property for wetlands jurisdiction. Originally, there was a large section that was considered jurisdictional with some of the changes in rules that has now been declared isolated wetlands. So we've been able to get that removed from requiring mitigation. Also, I believe with your packet is a map showing the different parcels that are being requested for purchase, and you can see that there is a cell tower almost in the middle of the property, which has been quite a challenge to work around. We have had numerous meetings with the planning department to see how we can work with that, and I believe that USMGO has been satisfied with some of the options. They are proposing that they will have a manufacturing facility on site. It will be at least 75,000 square feet, and they are proposing to have somewhere around 35-plus jobs. So I do want to, you know, share with you that Brunswick Bid and I, as Executive Director, do support this request. The products that they're making currently are only available through China. So this would be bringing a product manufactured domestically to Brunswick County, and it is a very good, very impressive building material. I've been to their, their open house, and to see this product, this is amazing, it's completely fire retardant. They actually melted a penny on top of it, and it didn't even scorch the material. Also, I want to see if anybody from USMGO is here. Ryan, do you want to make any comments about this?
Thank you, Bill, it was very nice. Ryan Miller, General Manager of USMGO, just want to say thank you very much for this opportunity. We appreciate having a new home in a challenging piece of land that we would make work for us very, very well. We're excited to continue investing in the Brunswick County community as we've been doing for the last year and a half, and look forward to bringing all these new jobs to the local area. And as Bill said, this will be the first plant of its type in the entire world. Actually, we'll be making a product that no one else in the world is making here. So we do believe that it's going to bring some innovation and development to the area, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Anybody have any question?
No. Just one general one, is will your entire operation be on this, or do you own any nearby? Just one general one is, will your entire operation be on this, or do you own any nearby property that would also be part of it, or is this the whole footprint?
We just began leasing a building for three years across from, it's on Front Street, next to the port and the Wilmington side. That's our distribution facility right now for the materials coming in from China. So we would move that facility to the new facility as well and consolidate all of our operations. Maybe one more facility in the western part of the country, just to be able to get our materials out there.
And where is MGO Holdings based?
We're based in Charlotte headquarters, but all of our staff are located here.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Did anybody else want to make a comment? Now, close the public hearing. Anybody up here have any questions? Any comments?
Are you looking for a motion?
I am now.
I make the motion that we approve the the sale of the twenty-two acres.
I'll second.
Thompson and Williams? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you all. Motion passes. All right, another. This isn't a public hearing, right? Okay. Public housing. It is, it is a public hearing. It's misspelled here. All right. So, Mr. Attorney.
No, it's.
Who's doing it? Kathy's doing it?
Yeah.
Come on up. So wait, so this is not a public hearing?
It is a public hearing. She has to do it every year.
Well, then I got to open it. Open the public hearing. Bring it on.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon. Annually, the HUD Housing and Urban Development requires every public housing agency to hold a public hearing to receive comments from the community regarding our annual plan. Additionally, every five years, we have to update our plan, our goals and objectives. Our goals and objectives are to improve the quality of the assisted housing. We do that by conducting landlord outreaches, ensuring all the assisted units meet HUD standards, continuing to perform courtesy inspections of, for prospective landlords, and maintaining an accurate relation, maintaining and acquiring relationships with apartment complexes, and ensuring that we maintain the rating of a high performer with CMAP. We continue to look for ways to enhance the program effectiveness, continue to apply for funding opportunities, and continue to improve our lease up rate. So, any questions?
Are there any questions for Kat?
I ask that we hold the public hearing to receive any comments.
I have, again, nobody signed up for public comments. Anybody like to come up and say something?
Everybody wants.
I'll make a motion that we.
Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Any comment up here or a motion? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion with that.
I have a second.
Same goes.
Sykes and William? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Pam.
All right, we move on to the administrative report. Mr. Stone? Oh, I thought you had something prior to that, okay?
Hello, good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Thank you for considering my request. I will not bore you by reading everything that was in the agenda item. I just want to make a few points. I have been with the Board of Elections since two thousand and six. So, in a galaxy far, far away, a long, long time ago, we only had sixty-one thousand registered voters, and I was one of four full-time employees. We now are at oh, please, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand registered voters. And I currently, I just got my seventh, which I'm very appreciative for, my seventh full-time employee. The reason we have been able to have a slower full-time staff growth is we managed to supplement with permanent part-time employees that commit to us during election season to do things like help us with absentee voting, help us with poll worker training. We recently lost one of our permanent part-time employees who was with us for nine elections. And that individual really was kind of the backbone of working with our precinct officials. And losing that institutional knowledge hurt, and it really is going to impact our functions. And for that reason, I think it's crucial that that role be managed by a full-time employee who can be on staff all year long, be made aware of changes as they happen, so that they can start preparing training material. We recruit and work with precinct officials all year long. And I think it's time that we bring on someone to be with our office full-time to manage poll workers.
Any questions?
And I probably missed it. How many poll workers do you currently?
So, on our list of available poll workers, we have about seven hundred. In the last election, so the presidential election, we used nearly five hundred. So all of those five hundred people we're corresponding with by email, we're inviting them to training. We have to audit the training that they attend before we can assign them to a location. And then, of course, after training and when we assign them to a location, then we start having them call out. I mean, it really is like a full-time job managing that process. And then on top of that, we have to have someone available for six weeks to spend in a training class with all of these people. So it's very labor-intensive.
Okay, I've got another question. All right, the way I'm reading this says it's requesting the Commissioners to approve the full-time position in the Board of Elections, so I'm assuming this came from administration with your approval?
Ye- yes, sir.
Okay, and the funding, how soon would the position be hired? And do we have the funds currently to go ahead and hire now to prepare?
Yes.
Okay.
Only question I would have if I could, Mike. The number of poll workers, I'm assuming that includes early voting poll workers.
That, yes. Most of our election day poll workers are also early voting workers, so we just count them once. But of course, dealing with the early voting schedules and training, that is much more complicated because we work shifts and we have seventeen days of voting and things.
And I was wondering how you did it with the number of poll workers you did, to be honest.
We have a very dedicated group of poll workers that will commit their time to us during that period. I mean, they change vacations. When they know there's an election, they will block off their calendar with their spouses to say, we are not traveling. I need to be here. So we're very fortunate.
I'm a candidate, and I don't do that. So, this election, please forgive me. The election specialist position is what you just said. They're going to coordinate all the training, all the bodies, where they got to be at each site?
Yes.
And all of that?
Yes.
That seems very reasonable to me.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
All of the administrative functions that surround dealing with the precinct officials, yes.
And reading basic deal of growth.
Yes.
That's what it is. And reading the job description on the screen, that's a lot.
Yeah, it is.
It is. I agree. Any other questions? I will make a motion for approval.
I'll say. I'll defer to Commissioner Thompson.
Porte and Thompson, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay. We get these. We went black here, Liam.
Yeah, hold on.
Got you. All right, so we have a couple of board appointments.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, one. All right. So we have an appointment for the ABC Board. We request the Board consider an appointment from this attached list of applicants for the ABC Board. Does anybody have somebody here that they know well that you would like to motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have spoken at length with Mr. Stephen McElroy. He seems very capable, that individual. He is a contract federal background investigator. He does classified background checks on individuals, and he's very plugged in. He's an Army veteran, and he also teaches classes here in Columbus, well, in Brunswick, as well as in Columbus, hunter safety classes. He's got a classified rating. Point being is, I think he's got, all thinks he's a former police officer in Baltimore City as a retired Baltimore City Police Officer and County Police. And, you know, I talked to him at great length, and I think he's got the expertise and the background to be able to do a good job with this. So I would like to put forth the name of Mr. Stephen McElroy for the ABC Board.
I'll second.
I believe his name is McLeroy, but okay.
My apologies.
Depends on where you're from.
We're all doing it tonight.
Stephen McLeroy. Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I could make one comment, this appointment is happening because the prior occupant of this seat, Mr. Al Beatty, passed away. And he lived in my district. I didn't know him well, but I had met him. We actually met to talk about the Reeves Chapel Restoration Project, which most of you may be aware that that was dedicated recently. And he was instrumental in helping bring that project to fruition, and unfortunately passed away before it was opened. But they certainly honored him, and I just wanted to point out that that's why this seat is vacant, is because someone who did a great job unfortunately left us too soon.
And I'd like to echo that, too. I had the honor, getting to know him a little bit, and had lunch with him a number of years back. He's a super fine man.
Yes.
And we have lost a great person, and so you're right about that, truly.
Okay. With that, we will be entering into a closed session for a little bit.
Can I do other business right quick before we do that? I have one thing.
I was trying to get away.
I was trying to get to X before X one. Are you ready? All right. And the county attorney got a pen? Okay, good deal. Back before, in early two thousand, whenever I came to Brunswick County, we had issues of open burning that was pretty bad. It exceeded the one-hundred-foot mark for residential burning, which the county only controls. So it was actually in permitted areas that forestry handled. And what was happening was there was just uncontrollable burning. And so at that particular time, did some investigation into it and found out that Brunswick County was not at that time considered a high-hazard county. We were able to do the presentation before the Commissioners back in early two thousand. The Commissioners approved it, and Brunswick County became a high-hazard county, which meant that there had to be controlled burns whenever you burned debris off of land clearing, major land clearing. And so, things have changed. Brunswick County has certainly gotten much more populated since two thousand, the early two thousands. And so what I feel like needs to occur is a modification to Article seventy-eight of General Statute one oh six dash nine forty and nine forty-two. And I would ask that the county attorney review that and make a proposal back to this commission to consider. What I would say is that we move to a no burn for the purpose of land clearing and debris reduction in Brunswick County outside of the one-hundred-foot area that the county controls anyway. So this would be in areas outside the one-hundred-foot, and it would be five acres or larger. With the exception, there's four exceptions. Agricultural can still burn. Prescribed burns to prevent wildfires can still burn. Permanently operating burn sites, and as far as I know, we only have one of those that is permitted by the state. It's located on Old Georgetown Road, and gentleman's been operating that for years, doing local burns of debris. And the last one is storm debris reduction. If we were to have a major storm here in the county and burning was an option, then we would choose that our permitted sites be eligible for burns. So what I'm asking is that the county attorney that be authorized to review this general statute, see if he can come back with a recommendation that we could consider for no burn for land clearing in Brunswick County, with the exception of agricultural use, prescribed burns for prevention of wildfires, any permanently operating sites that are currently operating in Brunswick County for burns, and then storm debris reduction if we were to need that. Outside of that, I think our our development has occurred so fast, and we are having so many complaints about the environmental impact and the debris on our that people are complaining about constantly from the amount of burning that has taken place in the land clearing. So I think this is one way to address that and still provide us with options that provides a safe environment for Brunswick County, so. That's all I have.
Anybody else? One thing, just a small thing I would request, is if possible, on the printed agendas, to put the name of who is going to be the staff presenter or whatever for each person. I believe we used to do that where item X would say that Steve was presenting, item Y would say Brian was presenting, so that we can all look at this and know which person, especially for the chairman, who he needs to call on.
Worked. I'm fine with that.
I just think that would be helpful to know who's coming up.
We seem to work.
I think we used to do that years ago, if I remember correctly, but I may, that may not be.
All right. If there is no further business or informal discussion, we will move to a closed session. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. If we can get a motion in a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, one and five, approves closed session minutes and discuss personnel, and also to with the attorney of the matters concerning attorney-client privilege.
Motion, second, Williamson Sykes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session.
I'm gonna do it without you anyway. I waved that down before.
Let's do one, too. All right, so it's on you. Mr. Chairman.
Ask your attorney if he has anything to say.
You better put down your mic.
Did everybody hear me?
He didn't hand me down earlier. How did he get?
No, I did. I did. When we went up, I pushed it up. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report from closed session.
Move to adjourn.
Talking. I got a motion. I got a stackin'. Let's go home.
Aye.
We are adjourned.